Who may have joined us, we'll go ahead and get started this evening. We'll have council member Swanson. Start our meeting either with a thought. A moment of silence, an invocation, and then the pledge of allegiance. So Phil.
Just a moment of reflection tonight, I was. Thinking about the passing of the Candy Bomber, Gail Halverson. And all of the good that he did. In a very difficult circumstance. And when he really didn't have to do anything. And I just thought, how wonderful are those kinds of people? And then that took me back. Because Mr. Rogers, you know, was such a part of my life growing up. You know, and the phrase that he always said, look for the helpers, right? There's always the, always the helpers. And I thought. What a great way to live would be to combine the two of them and to be a helper and, and to be. Going to make what seems like such a. Small act of kindness that can mean so much to somebody else. Like the Candy Bomber did. So that's my thought for the night encourages to try to live like those two. And I think we can help make the world a better place. Will you join me now for the pledge of allegiance? Will you mute your computers, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
All right, before we get started on our agenda. I've got to read our favorite statement. Hopefully, we're getting near the end of having to read this statement. Although apparently COVID is still. Alive and well out in the community. So pursuant to section code. Utah's code section fifty-nine dash two dash four oh seven. As mayor of North Ogden City. I've determined that conducting an electronic meeting with an anchor location presents a substantial risk. To the health and safety of those who may be present at the anchor location. This determination is based on the co-changes in fifty-nine dash two dash four oh seven. Approved by the Utah Legislature regarding the Open Meetings Act. COVID nineteen cases and the need for caution and people meeting together. North Ogden City meetings. For the month of January and February will be held electronically. And we will not have a physical location. All attendees will can connect remotely and links for public participation. Are available on the North Ogden City website. So with that, I would ask council if there's anyone who has any. Feel they have any conflict of interest regarding the agenda tonight. If so, now would be the time to indicate. I can't see Councilmember Dowpas, but I assume he'd speak up if he had any. So we'll move on to item number two. Hopefully Dylan Hill is with us, our Public Works Inspector. He's. Going to discuss and give conditional acceptance of the Northview Estates Phase Six subdivision first. I think he's got three of them this evening. So Dylan, if you were with us. If you'd like to let us know how those subdivisions are and you recommend approval. Conditional acceptance.
Yeah, good evening. I, I think I'm on here. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
So yeah, like you said, starting out with. Northview Estates Phase Six. It's at the top of Lakeview Drive. We, we walked through there, gave them a punch list of items that, that are still needed to be done, but. The ten percent will, will cover that cost. And everything else is up to city code and standard. There was one ADA ramp. That. The gap is too large in the concrete and it's got a little settling, so I'm still watching out for that stuff.
But.
Good man Dylan, good man.
Now, I would. Move for conditional acceptance is my recommendation.
Counsel, while Dylan is with us, do you have any questions regarding his recommendation for conditional acceptance? Of North US States Phase Six. Okay, I'd be looking for a motion then to approve conditional acceptance of the North US States Phase Six subdivision.
Mayor, I move that we approve. Conditional acceptance of North US States Phase Six subdivision subdivision. With the punch list that Dylan Hill was watching.
Okay, we have a motion to. For conditional acceptance based upon Dylan's recommendation and the. Punch list that was in the packet. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by council member extra, any further discussion? All in favor of conditional acceptance then say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I think we're good on that. Motion passes unanimously. Let's go on to item number three. Dylan is going to give us the update on this. This is acceptance of North US States Phase Seven subdivision. Uh, conditional acceptance, Dylan?
And Phase Seven is. Right, right adjacent to Phase Six and the same thing went up there, gave them a. A punch list, the biggest. Outstanding thing is streetlights right now. But the contractor. Is coming out this week, he said to, to put them in. So still watching them on those and. The ten percent would cover any improvements that are outstanding. They do need to. Do something on this Autumn Street. Thirty-six seventy-five, a temporary turnaround that they couldn't build on that lot, but. Now they're developing to the east. So. Once they get that squared away. They should have everything to city code and standard. I would also recommend conditional acceptance for this subdivision as well.
Any questions of Dylan, counsel?
I just want to clarify something, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Ekstrom.
So Dylan, when we give conditional acceptance like this, this is acceptance for them to then start selling and building the lots. Have they actually sold the lots or they? Or it's just they can't build on them until we say they can't.
So conditional acceptance is going to start their, their warranty period, which. Is in that. One year after you approve conditional acceptance, they guarantee all their improvements. We do this, they can sell the lots before they get conditional acceptance. If you, if you make your way up here, there's a lot of these lots that are, that are sold, but. They won't get final acceptance until that year is passed and all the standards or. All the improvements are made through that punch list going out there. Seeing work, what work is done and what work isn't done.
Okay, so they can sell them, but they.
Well, they, they can build on them too, yeah.
They could build on them too. Okay, that's just my curiosity. I'm just wondering how this process goes. I, um.
Go ahead, John, Councilman. What you're accepting is the, the street and infrastructure improvement. So the subdivisions are accepted by the planning commission. It's just the, the physical infrastructure that they built. That they're turning over and putting in the city's name. That's what you're accepting.
Okay.
And we have an S, we have a remake, we have a remaining escrow. I think in place too, to, to finish up things or. To make sure that one year warranty is taken care of. Is that correct, Dylan?
Correct. In the staff report, it shows the, the ten percent that is. Kept from the total improvement for that one year period that won't be released until. The warranty is over.
But they like to get these things conditionally approved so they can get back as much of their original escrow as possible, right?
That is correct. And also after they do their, after they complete the improvements. And they're in. We can't give them money if it's not done yet.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion then to approve. Dylan's recommendation on conditional acceptance of North US States Phase Seven. Did you, did you make that council member Ekstrom?
I hadn't actually quite made that yet, but I was just making sure I knew what I was actually moving to approve. Sometimes I think I understand something and then I'm like. You know, I'm, no, let me quote clarify. But yes, I would like to make a motion that we approve. Conditionally acceptance for North US States Phase Seven subdivision.
Here we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Dowpas, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of accepting Dylan's recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
On motion passes unanimously. Okay, Dylan, let's move on to. The next one, which is the conditional acceptance of White Rock Phase One subdivision.
Awesome. Yeah, White Rock is a. Subdivision right off the North Ogden Divide. And. I went there as well, gave them a detailed punch list. I had. Casey Hunzaker with the Streets Department, Dave and. Jason were able to go out there with me too. And we walked the whole site. They have a punch list as well, but. The ten percent would, would cover any outstanding improvements. And I recommend conditional acceptance for this subdivision as well.
Okay, counsel, any mem, questions for Dylan?
I have a quick question.
Awesome, Dowpas, go ahead.
This subdivision, is this the one that was discussed recently in Planning Commission that there was a problem with the? The front boundary lines and, and how much room they had on those, or was that Phase Two?
I'm, I'm not quite sure. I wasn't, I didn't watch that meeting. I apologize.
It's Phase Two.
Okay, then, I'm good then, thanks.
Awesome. All right, any further questions? Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of conditional acceptance of White Rock. Phase One subdivision, please say aye.
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 Are there any opposed?
Oh, I don't think we had a motion there. Officially by anyone, did we?
Uh, well, let's go back. You're probably right. I'm a little under brain fog right now, so thanks for the correction. Councilmember Dowpass, we are looking for a motion.
So I will go ahead and motion that we accept the conditional acceptance of White Rock.
Thank you, Councilmember Dowpass. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ekstrom, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Speaking of subdivisions, I do have a question. The subdivision down here just off twenty-six hundred eleven something east. There. Do we have a new type of street light or something? I, I always look down. It looks like the moon's rising. That thing's so bright.
Is. Is that just off twenty-six hundred north?
It is off twenty-six hundred north and probably twelve something east.
Yeah, Northwood Hills. Those streetlights just got connected like a month ago. They, they do have like a sixty watt bulb, but nothing that's not in the public work standards.
Wow. Looks like a spotlight from my backyard. I'm talking about the one right at the top. Uh, that. Ryan and Blake and those guys are developing. It's right at the top. On the north side of the street.
Oh, uh. I think North, Northhampton, they were also hooked up. Northampton, uh. It's on the north side of twenty-six hundred like. But it's like thirteen hundred east, right?
Could be it, that could be it, but.
Yeah. They, the same thing that we got about twenty of those in the, in the ground right now. And.
Doesn't look like that's helping us much with our dark sky objectives.
Uh, to ask last Lauren about it, could I just say one more thing?
Always Dylan, you're always welcome to say one more thing.
So there's a, there's a always, like the next subdivision that's gonna need a walkthrough. And to come and ask for conditional acceptance. And I just want to make it. Known for any, any council member that would like to come. Uh, if. If I could reach out, I know I went with Blake. To one earlier this year, anybody, I would be more than happy to walk around and. Show you guys what I do before I come to the, the meetings, so.
Awesome.
Just keep.
Thanks for the offer.
Right on, I appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do, Dylan. All right, let's move on to item number five, which is an action to consider the January fourth. Twenty twenty-two city council meeting minutes. Uh, council, have you had a chance to look through those? Have you found any corrections? Uh, doesn't look like anyone has any corrections, so I'd be looking for a motion. To approve those January fourth, twenty twenty-two. City council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
A move by Councilmember Swanson. Do we have a second? I've never seen approval of minutes die for lack of a second. Do we have a second?
Sorry.
All right, Councilmember Barker, thank you. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We will now move into our active agenda. We'll go to public comments. John, if you would please watch. For any citizens who would like to comment to do so. Uh, just raise your hand and John will recognize you. Uh, if you'd like to make a comment, please state your name and. If you're from North Ogden. And please try to limit your comments to no more than five minutes. John, if you'd let us know, please.
No hands raised yet, Mayor.
Give it just a second to see if anyone has any comments. All right, John, do you see any?
No, nothing yet.
All right, we will then move on. Uh, council, item number seven. Let me just give you an update on that. Uh, John and Susan did some further research on that. And found that this property is located actually listed in the Pleasant View Cities Annexation Policy and Map. So we've informed the petitioner. And we've told him and he will work with Pleasant View regarding annexation of this. Property into Pleasant View. So we'll move on then to item number eight. And John, call our city attorney and manager. Uh, we'll talk to us about a fiber franchise agreement that was in the packet. John, and this is related to agreement. Number A zero four dash twenty twenty-two, John?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So. Counsel, we occasionally do approve these. Franchise agreements. A couple of years ago. We redid the franchise agreement, I think. Can't remember which provider was coming in, but we basically said. We created agreement and said, this is what we're going to have everybody follow. Um, we're not going to do onesie twosie agreements. Um, because we didn't want. One provider getting something that another provider didn't, just because they didn't ask for or vice versa. And so this is our, pretty much our standard. Franchise agreement for communications. I had thought. That Mr. Bradshaw was going to be here for this meeting, but he must have had a conflict come up. Um, because I was anticipating he would be able to answer questions the council might have about fiber. And about Senna Wave as a company. So let me see if I can summarize some of the comments that. And things that him and I talked about on the phone. The first being is. That they are looking for a franchise agreement, one to do a little bit of work on the, in a development that's in the south end of the city. But then also. As, as I was talking with Mr. Bradshaw, I mentioned that we were looking for someone to do the whole city. And he said he would look into it. And he got back to me and said, well, hey. You know, if, if we sign this franchise agreement, I don't, you know, our, we're going to go ahead and run fiber throughout the whole city at no cost to the city. Anyways, long story short, that is their current plan. Uh, there's nothing in writing or anything that would guarantee. That we get that, but they anticipate because of the way they lay fiber. That they would be able to get a good majority of, or not majority, but a good portion of the city actually done this year. Um, they do a lot of aerial fiber where a lot of other companies will only run it in ground. Um, fiber is delicate, but they basically put a conduit in the air and then run the fiber through the conduit. Anyways, I did ask him, last time we talked about this. I think it was you, Councilman Swanson, who asked, this is several years ago. Um, about how many fiber providers or how many providers are we going to let come into the city? Um, because of the, the toll it has on the roads as well as the difficulty in. Running cable and trying to. Uh, dig up broken water lines and things like that. This, this gentleman was sent away, indicated that as soon as one group has come in and run fiber. Uh, nobody else will. That essentially the, the market. Uh, will, will essentially price the other people out. Um, but with the star city having CenturyLink Comcast and then a fiber provider. That essentially it would be about the best thing the city could hope for because that's about the right mix of competition. Um, that his model with the Senna Wave is to do an open fiber. Where they have a, there's a fee for using the fiber, but there's a, a multiple internet service providers who piggyback on the fiber. And so residents and those individuals with access would be able to. Uh, select their own internet provider essentially. And those internet providers. Uh, would have an agreement with Senna Wave for using their fiber. I did ask him about micro trenching. Not sure if any of you know what that is, but essentially they saw cut. Road and bury cable in the road. Um, it's a very popular method of doing this type of installation work. He assured me that they do not do it, uh, because they don't like it and they also. Have found that it causes quite a bit of havoc on the road network. Uh, because it creates one more pathway for fluids and things to get under the road and undermine the facilities. So, uh. He told me that he wouldn't do it. Our, our ordinance doesn't allow for people to micro trench. So there's not a fear of that, but at least. He was already on the same page with me and Dave on that. Trying to think what else you might be interested in knowing, counsel. Is there, are there any questions? About this agreement?
Uh, counsel, I did have a question as I looked through the agreement, excuse me. Um, this has a provision in there and John tells me this is a standard agreement. But it's a ten-year agreement and then no matter if, if I read this right, John, and correct me. It's an automatic renewal. They just have to let us know and they get an automatic five-year. A renewal. Uh, I don't believe the city has to approve that. My concern is if you get somebody in the city. They're not performing, they're not doing their job. Uh, this, this almost seems to be. At least a fifteen-year agreement, if not continually agreed with five years. Did I read that right, John?
Um, yeah, they, they would get. The additional five years unless we said that we didn't want to renew with them. After that ten-year term.
Well, that's what I guess I'm stuck on, John. It says. Uh, unless I, the franchise granted here may be renewed by the provider. Upon terms and conditions contained in this agreement for an additional five-year term providing. To the city's representative designated here in written notice. It doesn't say we have to. Approve a five-year extension. Is there somewhere else in the agreement that? Says we, they don't get an automatic five years by just telling us they want it?
I think by saying it may be renewed instead of it shall be renewed, then it, it is at the option of the parties. On whether or not that five-year term is extended.
Yeah, it, it looks like as I read that the franchise granted herein may be renewed by the provider. They don't have to renew it, but if they want to, they can just automatically renew it for five years. Is that not true?
I, I think you're reading it the right way. Um, it's like I said, this is the same agreement we've done with everyone from Rocky Mountain Power. Up to, you know, the, the people who are laying cable work like, said like Seringa.
That's just one of the questions I had. I just. Don't like agreements if things aren't going well, but. You really don't have much to say about it.
What, what language would you suggest we include there to?
I would say is mutually agreed upon or something of that nature with. Which approval wouldn't be unreasonably withheld, but. I just think that if, if they're not performing. You know who gets the? Uh, the blame for it, right? My thought is up to the council.
Okay, I, I can type some language up for the agreement for the council review. If you have other questions, I'd be happy to listen to those too. I, I did forget to mention that. Anyone who signs a franchise agreement with the city and provides these type of services does pay a franchise fee. Um, I think from all of our utilities and franchise fees in the city, we get just over a million dollars. In revenue each year.
That's three and a half percent of gross revenues. Is that right, John, as I recall?
Uh, yeah, it's. It's right here in the franchise fee. Uh, three and a half of gross receipts. And that, that amount is set by the state. So the state is the one who, uh, we, we don't have the ability to negotiate.
Well, counsel, do you have any questions or? Any thoughts you'd like to add? Is that you, Councilmember Swanson?
It is.
Go ahead, please.
John, it sounds like with this being an aerial. Fiber. That it is not something that would. Come up into our bench, uh, the bench areas or higher up on the hill because there really isn't any aerial. Wiring that it would, could be suspended from.
So they would be doing a mix. Where they could do aerial, they would do aerial. And where they, where they'd have to trench, they would want to trench. Um, but then the other thing he talked about would be. And this would not be something for the council, but. Uh, so, well, I guess it would to come back in our public work standards that when people subdivide and install improvements. Uh, they'd be required to give all of the telecommunications companies operating in the city notice. So they could come put their fiber in the open trenches. Um, so that they don't have to come back later and trench. So that, but he did, that's why I think he said forty percent of the city could be done pretty quick. Cause that's how much has, has easy access to aerial. And then the rest of the city would have, would be slower, but it would be trenching. But he, he represented to me that it would be the entire city would be their, their goal.
Uh, John, I think Councilmember Swanson has a good point. If we have no agreement that requires the tough. Uh, fibering to be done. You know, uh. Bless their hearts. I mean, we may have aerial fiber in the lower part of the city, so. Do we have a side agreement or anything with this company that would indicate that they? Would use best efforts to get that done, or are we just hoping for the best?
So with, with all of our telecommunications agreements, we don't have any guaranteed. Service areas. Um, so Comcast and CenturyLink's agreement. Is, well, CenturyLink's is not, it's old enough that it's not the same agreement, but Comcast is the same agreement that just says, hey. Wherever you run the cable in the city, you have to pay us three and a half percent for it. And you get to use our roads and.
I guess as we represent the citizens, they've elected us to represent them. Shouldn't we be doing something to try to assure that the, all of our residents have access to, to fiber? I know this is a standard agreement, but is this one we just want to continue on? Or as we have these type of franchises come in? Or as we have these type of franchises come in. We want to try to assure service to as much of our residents as we can. Just, that's obviously a council decision.
John, do we also have any indication of what kind of gig speeds? Are offered through this service?
Um, I, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Council member Barker, did you have a comment?
Um, my thought process. Just listening to this. Short little discussion. We've been, we've heard from a couple of companies that have come in pitching the idea of fiber where we'd have to bond for twenty years or thirty years, depending on which company. And the city would be on the hook. I'm personally of the opinion, I don't think fiber is a long-term solution. And I don't think it'll be around in twenty years or thirty years, if we get a company coming in right now. It says they'll get going on the city and get forty percent done quickly, whatever quickly means is up to them. And then they'll work on the rest of the city and it's gonna cost us nothing. I don't see the downside because this is a franchise agreement. If another company wants to come in and say, we'll sign the same agreement and we'll put fiber, we'll bury it up on the hills. As a franchise agreement, we'd be giving them the same agreement that this one is. This is the same was what we given Comcast, we've given it to CenturyLink. If another co- cable company wants to come in, they can get the same agreement that Comcast gets. I don't. See a downside and with them wanting to renew their service at fifteen year or ten years to go to fifteen years. If they're not giving good service, customers are not getting renewed with them. But that's just my short sighted, maybe.
Well, I think as, as, uh, John said, uh, if we. If this is our fiber, fiber provider, uh, most likely nobody else is gonna come in. So if we're happy with getting forty percent of the ci- uh, cer- uh, city served without any obligation for them other than their word. I, I guess we can proceed along, but, uh. I don't think if John's right, we're not gonna get another fiber person in here and we know that. We've been getting a lot of pressure from citizens, not just where there's, uh. Aerial. Fiber, we've been getting pressure from everyone, but.
Well, and, uh, if I further, um. If they come in and do forty percent and see that there's such a high demand for use here. Why would? If they're a good business company, they'd keep going.
Well, it's a little expensive to, uh, to put in non-aerial fiber.
Agreed.
But anyway, just my two cents worth. So, uh, we have before us an agreement. Um, council, do you have any further questions?
I have a con- comment.
Uh, go ahead, council member Dowpass.
So, when I, when I looked at Senna wave. Uh, broadband on the internet, it, I was trying to figure out exactly what Phil was asking is what, what are the? Speeds that they are saying that they will be able to provide through their service. And one thing that had me a little bit nervous and, and I need to understand if it's a difference in technology or whatever it might be, but. When I pull up their website. One of the things, there's a testimonial from a customer that says. You know, Senna wave did great, they got me speeds from going from twenty megabytes before they had the service. To one hundred megabytes per second. And for anyone that knows speeds, that one hundred megabytes per second these days isn't all that fast. And so just with a quick Google search of what is a fiber speed generally. Fiber speeds is anywhere from two hundred and fifty by, or two hundred and fifty gigabytes or megabytes per second to one gig. So. I wanna be sure that this technology is on par with what. Uh, another fiber provider would be able to provide, so. I don't know if it has to do with their technology of hanging it up in the air as opposed to down. In the ground, I, I, I just, I have a lot of questions about that, so that would be my only hesitancy.
I like, uh, council member Barker's comments, uh. Although we were discussing a little bit earlier, we, we don't know what free really means, what, what's free these days, what does that? Really mean, but it's, uh, surely a lot more attractive than a fifteen or twenty million dollar bond. If it properly. Services our, our city. Mayor, uh, council member Swanson.
I'd like to take the motion that we postpone this and have a presentation by the individual. So we can have a little further information, a little more in-depth information. As to what exactly they would provide. Uh, to the customers, similar to the presentations that we've had from other potential providers.
Is that a motion, council member Swanson?
It is.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone. Addressing, uh. Item number eight on our agenda, uh, agreement, A O four dash twenty twenty-two, do we have a second to postpone this?
I second that.
It was second by council member Extrem. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Okay, item is postponed, we'll get that on a future agenda.
Hey, mayor.
Yes, sir.
Can I sit, make one last comment?
You always can, council member Barker.
I have no problem postponing this, um. I also believe. Community government should not get in the way of utilities. So. With the franchise, any utility wants to come in the city should be allowed to come into the city. I don't think the government should be the one regulating who gets to come in, who doesn't, and who should be, and that, that's why I don't think the. North Dakota should be bonding for fiber. If there's the enterprise or their. Desire out there to come in, they should come.
Yeah, I guess the question is, fiber really a utility, I think this is the K'sville question. Where they tried to say it was utility and required participation. So, uh. I don't know if fiber's a utility or not, we call it a utility agreement, but. I don't know if that was ever. Determined to be legally classified as a utility. All right, thanks for your comments, council member Barker. Um. Let's move on to item number nine. And this is a, uh, action to consider a resolution related to mailbox replacement. Excuse me, this is resolution, uh, oh, three dash twenty dash twenty-two. So, Mr. Call, would you like to proceed with your presentation on the mailbox replacements?
Uh, thank you, mayor, so this is coming back at the council's request, uh, this resolution was passed in January of twenty twenty. Uh, it set the limit. Of how much we would spend on a mailbox in paragraph two at eight hundred dollars. Um, and it did require, uh. Physical connection from the. Snow plow blade and to the mailbox and not just pushed over by wet and heavy snow. That's rolling off of the blade. Um. We currently have a request from an individual who, uh, their mailbox was, was hit by a blade. Um, and their quotes to get their mailbox replaced is seventeen hundred dollars. Um, I think the highest, I think we amended it in January of twenty twenty. Uh, because the request for that mailbox was about seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, and so the, the question before the council is, would you like to raise this amount? And if, or would you like to eliminate the amount, I guess, is, is fair of a question, um. The only thing that, that is gonna be a, a struggle is that at some point. Um. I think that, that. It's not fair to the rest of the residents to have. Um, people installing very expensive structures on city property and then expecting the city to replace it. If it gets damaged, um. But that's just, that's just my opinion from a. Uh, city manager side of things.
Okay, thank you, John, for your comments, so. At this point in time, council will, uh, will open it up for discussion. Before we make a motion, uh, here. I think that's prudent, so. Council member Extrem, did I see you unmute, do you have a comment?
You did, yes, I think. I don't know that people are necessarily installing really expensive mailboxes at this point, I think. Pretty much all new construction has, uh, community mailboxes are required. So I don't, I don't know if there's spots, maybe there's someone else can answer that question for me, but, um. I think most of the ones that are here have been here for a while, that was one of the questions that I asked. The resident who's currently petitioning to get their mailbox replaced, I was like, did you build this mailbox? And they were like, no. This was the mailbox that came with the, the house when we bought it, we like it cause it matches our house. So, I mean. My feeling is that, you know, uh, what, what's the actuarial risk, right, it's like, how much do we really have to kind of budget aside? To, to cover. You know, how, how often it happens, you know, can we self-insure for this? Um, cause I really would, would like to see that if we cause damage, we fix it. So, um, you know, I, I, I'm hesitant to put like a limit, you know, I think. Construction right now is crazy and it's really, really expensive, I think generally we, but. Um, we, we can't really predict like how expensive something is gonna be to. To fix, but I think. You know, is, is there some way we can kind of estimate and then just kind of? Allow for that and budget for that, um, just so that we. You know, we fix what we break, that's kind of, that's, that's where I sit, but that's one person's opinion.
Thank you, council member Extrem, having recently gone out, uh. In the one or two snowstorms we've had with them. You can see how this can easily happen the way we plow. Uh, I think we've substantially reduced it from, I think, a maximum of twenty-five in one year. We probably get three or four maybe in a given year. But I think, uh, in an earlier discussion with John, you know, he proposed maybe a way to minimize or mitigate the risk. And reduce, uh, expense to the city. Without probably having too much of a. An effect on the citizens. Uh, right now, we, for those of you been out, you probably understand this a lot better than I do. We have two plows, one will plow. The traffic lanes. On the street. And then another plow will come behind and push the snow up to the curb. Uh, I'm not sure how many cities continue to do that versus just plowing the travel lanes. Um, but that's where we kind of get into this situation is trying to. Plow the snow as close as we can to the curb or actually push it up on the, uh, the park strip, but. Let's go to you, council member Swanson, and hear what you've, your, your thoughts are on this.
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you for your comments. Do you have any further comments?
Uh. You know, you can see easily understand. Both positions, a, a position where we have a cap. And the, the position where. If we break it, we fix it. But I share the concern that. The, you know, we break it, we fix it. That, that's basically a blank check for, we never know how much. Uh, it, it all depends on. What the individual resident has decided they want to build and. Snow plowing is an inexact science, it's not even a science, it's an inexact art. And I, I think if we are going to leave it. Essentially uncapped that we fix whatever gets broken. Excuse me. That we also then have to reconsider how it is that we're plowing. As mayor mentioned, and move away from. More convenience oriented plowing to more lane clearing. Basic traffic flow kind of plowing patterns. Um, understanding that that means each of us. And all of the residents will have more to do. To clear out in front of the mailboxes and things like that in order for. U S Postal Service to deliver. And those kinds of things, um. But I don't think we can. We, we have, if we're gonna do one, we have to do the other in my opinion.
As you, council member Swanson, I was just thinking. How much worse it could it be to clear in front of the mailbox than it is when all the snow shoved up against it? Um, but you know, the other thought that, uh, comes into my mind. Um, you know, we ordered a snowplow last year for this year, we still haven't received it. They're about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a pop. For a snowplow and, uh, in essence, the way we plow now, we're double. Using them, so to speak. One to plow the travel lanes, then one to come and push it. Up against the, uh. The curb, so there's also, be sure they don't want to inconvenience our residents by any means. But there is a cost. In addition to knocking over mailboxes. Uh, I think, John, you said, uh. You know, in the next twenty years, we'd have to maybe replace and grow ten. Snow plows, uh, to the tune of about two and a half million dollars to continue to do what we're doing today also, but. Let's go to, uh, council member Dowpass, and then we'll go to council member Barker, what are your thoughts on this?
I think that even though it seems like there's a little bit of gray area, if, you know, considering where the right of way is and where the mailboxes are placed. I just think we need to replace them if we break them. Uh, but I do think that we definitely need to have a cap. And that cap should be hovering somewhere around eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred dollars. Uh, I think we. Should probably put it just a bit higher than we think it needs to be, just because inflation is going rampant, so we don't want to revisit this next year. So I would suggest, uh, that we put it at two thousand dollars per. Incidence and it has to be struck by the blade, of course, just the same as it's written right now. So those are just my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you. Go to you, council member Barker.
I agree, we should fix whatever we break, maybe we don't plow snow all the way to the curb. I don't agree with. I'm not in favor of the cap because we put a cap on two years ago at eight hundred dollars, now we see it's already doubled. So, we'll be readdressing a cap if we put one on.
Okay, any further comments? All right, then I'd be looking for a motion to, uh. Amend paragraph two of the. Um, resolution that's in front of us. Uh, do we have a motion? Council member Extrem.
Yes, mayor, I move that. We amend paragraph two to not have a cap. And that we. Address. Changing the method of snow plowing in the city. To, uh, reduce the risk of actually damaging mailboxes and, um. Perhaps reducing the amount of, uh. Money it costs to actually snowplow the city with, or the number of. Snow plows, et cetera, that we have.
Okay, council member Extrem, uh. I think it would be good to have that discussion about how to snowplow, maybe separate from this.
Yes, yeah, that was, that was sort of an aside, I'm sorry.
So, if I understand it right, your motion is, is to remove the cap. And simply replace what we break, so to speak.
Correct.
All right, do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, uh. John, do you want to, uh, put that language in there so the council can see what they're voting on?
Yeah, so I, I, I put it, this is the new language, any such mailbox repair replacement shall not exceed the actual expense to replace the mailbox. After receiving three bids from qualified contractors. So I, I added a little bit there, that I didn't know, or we could just say the actual expense to replace the mailbox.
I think it's good to get different bids.
Uh huh.
So, you okay with that motion?
Yes, I, I like that language, which, thank you, John.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, we'll take a roll call vote on this, this is regarding resolution oh, three dash twenty. Twenty-two. Um, let's go with you, council member Barker.
Yes.
Uh, council member Dowpass.
No.
Uh, council member Extrem.
Yes.
Council member Swanson.
Uh, no, and point of personal privilege, only because I think there ought to be some kind of cap.
All right, uh, the. You're smiling, you, you planned this, didn't you, council member Barker?
No, but this is working out perfect.
It's working out perfect. So we have a two to two vote on this, with that being the case. Um. The mayor will break the tie. Um. And. And vote down the motion for no cap. I believe that was the motion, is that there was no cap. Do we have another motion?
Do we need to make another motion to add the cap in then?
If you'd like to make another motion at this point in time, uh, because the motion did not pass, we'd be stuck at eight hundred dollars.
Okay. Well then, Mayor, I move that we change the language to include the cap of two thousand dollars.
Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Swanson.
Uh, this is a question for John. John, I believe a new motion or a reconsideration has to come from the prevailing side of the vote. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct. You, you Robert ruled this all.
Sorry. Mayor, I'll make a motion on behalf of Councilmember Ekstrom. That we approve. The amendment to section two. To put in a, um. The actual expense or two thousand dollars, uh, two thousand dollar cap. Uh, the wording says it a- appropriately there, thank.
Uh, would you like to add, Councilmember Swanson, the requirement to get bids? Did I see that taken out?
Oh, yes, John, I, I'll amend my motion to include that we need to get three bids. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion, uh, by Councilmember Swanson. We have a second to his motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, let's go with a voice vote. Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Yes.
Councilmember Dowpass.
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson.
Yes.
Okay, John, I would like to have on a, a work session or a future meeting. A discussion on, uh, you know, how we plow roads. Um, going forward. Uh, not only to try to minimize this situation, but. Um, what's convenient, uh, best for the citizens and for the, the city in regards to how we plow. So if you could make sure that gets on a future agenda, I'd appreciate it.
Uh, yep, we'll discuss it tomorrow with Public Works and set something up for the future.
All right. Let's go on to item number ten on our agenda. And also this will be led by John Callar, City Manager and Attorney. And this is a discussion or action to consider a resolution. To destroy, donate, or appropriate unclaimed property for public interest use. Now, Council, before we, uh, start this discussion, I wanted to say that, uh. Uh, all the paraphernalia and, and drug stuff, uh, is, uh, is off limits. It'll, it'll be destroyed, so. Let's go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, uh, this is something we do fairly routinely. Um, I think this, uh, group, at least once before, although probably not Councilman Dowpass. Um, but essentially what this is, is we get a lot of different items. Um, that show up in evidence. Some of them, uh, are things like book bags and other stuff. Where we try and find the old owners. A lot of them are items like this that are in the destroy category. Which are things that we, that no one wants, no one should keep. And then the last thing is, uh, what we, I'm sorry, the first thing is what we call safe keep, where we, we actually take it from somebody. Uh, you know, usually it's a weapon or something, and then we hold it until we can release it. Uh, sometimes those people never come back. Um, and so, and then the second category is what we're gonna destroy. The third category is the first item where we find a bunch of stuff. Um, you know, here there's a, a Darth Vader keychain. And, you know, there's. Uh, anyways, there's things like that that just kind of pop up. Uh, and what we have to do is some of these items have some value. And so the council has to, uh. Tell, ask us to, um. Or tell us how to dispose of them. You can see in this column, the disposition is, uh, D E S is destroy, D O N is donate. Uh, donate can be anything from, uh, sending it to a. A company that specializes in, uh, repurposing items to, uh, appropriating it for city. Um, use, you know, sometimes we find cash, for example, and no one ever claims it, and so we can, after this process, um. Put it into, uh, city coffers and use it for policing. Um, but basically, um. That's what these items are. Uh, we need the council's approval to, to formally, uh, dispose of these. What we'll do is there's a, a noticing period, um, that. Uh, we'll put a list of these items up and give people a last chance to kind of find them or to, to claim them. And if they aren't claimed, then they will go, uh, as they're described in the, this disposition. Uh, the RTF, I should explain that to return to finder. Meaning if someone finds something and turns it into the police, they can check a box that says, hey, if no one else comes to claim it, I would like it. Um, and so you can see there's at least two items on this list, uh, where. The, the individual who brought the bikes in or the other items has said, I'll take it if no one claims it. And that is allowed under state code. Um, essentially it's a, a good Samaritan reward to encourage people to turn stuff in. Uh, because then they have the opportunity of becoming the rightful owner. So, any questions for me, Council?
All right, Council, uh, if you have no further questions of John or. Anything on this list, let's proceed along with a motion. To approve Resolution, uh, zero four dash twenty-two. Which is a resolution to approve the, uh, to destroy, donate, or appropriate. Unclaimed property for public, uh, interest use. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Councilmember Swanson. Do we have a second? Hello. Second by Councilmember Dowpass. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Let's go with you, Councilmember Barker.
Yes.
Councilmember Swanson.
Yes.
Councilmember Dowpass.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ekstrom.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, uh, let's go into item number eleven. John, you'll be leading this discussion also. I think this is just an item for discussion on deferral agreements and variances. Uh, go ahead, John.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'm pulling up the presentation. So this, this ties into, uh. The discussion that we had about sidewalk deferrals. Um, and it was requested that, that this be brought back for a discussion with the council. Um, you, you'll find that, um. My slides are extra artsy today, so it's, because I knew it'd be late in the evening and we'd need to keep you all entertained. Uh, but essentially there's three different ways in which someone can modify the rules. Um, under our code or the state code. And the first one, uh. And, and they all relate to public improvements. Um, or at least they all can relate to public improvements. Um, we'll get, when we get to the last one on variances. That is, that's not the only thing it relates to, but the first two typically are. Um, but, so those are, the things that we're talking about are, are typically triggered by a development activity, which is a, uh, either a subdivision. Or even a building permit. Um, although most of the things that people complain about are subdivision or site plan related. Um, it's things like roads, sidewalks, the pipes in the ground, all that kind of stuff. Um. Usually, uh, people who are doing development will happily pay for these type of things because the burden. Is offset by, um, the amount of money they plan on making on it, or the benefit they feel like they're going to get out of it. Um, and it does apply to every single property in the city. Um, there's a few that it doesn't apply to, but I don't want to focus on that for the purposes of this discussion. Um, deferrals is what we've talked about most recently with the council. Um, we essentially treat it like a lien agreement, which is more in line with the escrow that we talked about earlier today. Uh, when Dylan was presenting about, uh, the improvements. We basically put a lien on the property that says, you were required to put this in, but we let you defer it. As long as we record this, we don't call it a lien agreement, we call it a deferral agreement against the property. And we require it to run with the land, meaning that whether that individual's there in ten years or somebody else, they had adequate notice. Um, that they would be required to do that. Um, it specifically is called out in our boundary line adjustment ordinance. Uh, where we allow for deferral agreements, um, but it is one of the. Um, methods allowed for under state code, uh, which is what we typically do when we treat it as a late, a, a lien or a deferral agreement. With most subdivisions. Um, there's nothing in state code that says we have to allow for it, for a deferral. Um, as long as we do. Um, but we, we do have the. Or we do have the opera, or that state code does require us to, to consider some liens. Um, sat satisfactory for escrow purposes. Um. The second method, there are special exceptions, and this is something that the city. Specifically created. There are other cities who do this, um. But we, the council several years ago found that the variance requirements were way too harsh and too hard for anybody to hit. And so this gives the council essentially the opportunity. Uh, to get a recommendation from the planning commission and then to review each of these five guidelines. Uh, looking at the health, safety, general welfare, uh, how does it impact neighboring properties? As well as the ability to develop it according to general plan. Um, are there, is there anything unique about the property? Um, or anything that we're trying to save, historical, cultural, things like that? Um, and then to look at the design of the connectivity and the community between subdivisions. Um, you know, sometimes that comes into play with special exceptions. And then the last one is traffic flow and safety. And so the council can look at all five of those. And could make a determination that one of those reasons outweighs the other four reasons and the special exception should be granted. There are some things that, that people are not allowed to get special exceptions for. And those are found in the code, this twelve, one, twelve, um, but I haven't, uh, chosen to, I don't, or to highlight those here. Um, we aren't required to allow for special exceptions. Um, it's something the council has done, uh, to accommodate, um. Various development activities in the city, usually when the strict rule of the ordinance makes. Makes it, uh, makes the proposed development activity so onerous that it. It can't be performed, and the state's variance code wa, doesn't provide it a relief. So it's kind of the middle ground. Um, between our code and the variance provisions in state code. Uh, variances, which is the third option or the third thing that we currently do in the city. Uh, they are, I, I'm gonna say they're really hard to get. And it's not because people don't regularly get them, but because you have to tick every box. So each one of these five bullet points that are listed here on the PowerPoint have to be met. Um, for you, for someone to get a variance. Um, there are times when cities support variances and times when they oppose them. But if the individual requesting for the variance doesn't meet every single one of those bullet points, they can't get it. And so even though the city might say, well, no harm, no foul, let them do it. Uh, if they don't meet the, the all five things, uh, there's no legal way to grant them the relief. Um, variances are unique in that they go to our hearing officer. Um, who, uh, who hears the, the both sides of the argument and then makes a ruling. Um, on the, on the facts. Uh, I believe in the city, we've actually had several variances. Um, that have gone through in the past five years. I'd probably say we have two to three a year that, that are approved. Um, and then maybe one in the past two or three years that hasn't been approved. Um, so they actually are granted fairly regularly, but they're just a little bit harder to get. Um. So with, with all of these options that the council has, um, on how we approach things. Um, I could sense, or I guess even the, you know, we all could sense that there was some frustration with the deferral agreement. That was approved a couple meetings ago. The idea being that there's a little bit of tension between if the council offers it as an opportunity. Um, then the council essentially now has to decide if they're gonna grant it to everybody. Or grant it to nobody, or if they're gonna pick who wins and who loses. And I think there was some, some frustration surrounding that from the council. On maybe feeling like your hands were tied. Um. In whether that's a tied to have to approve or tied to not approve, um. And so I just thought it would be good for the council to see all the, the different relief valves that are in our code. Um, so that you could have a discussion about, uh, either all three options. Um, although technically variance is not something we have the ability to say we won't allow, since state code allows for them. But maybe more in looking at special exceptions and deferrals and how the city, um. Evaluates and approves those two items. Um, I know at least one of the council members has suggested that maybe deferrals should just be entirely taken out of our code. Um, that would be allowable, um, because we're not required to do it under state code. Uh, just like we're not required to do special exceptions under state code. Um, so that's, that's a lot of talking for me.
Okay, thank you, John. Councilmember Dowpass, uh, let's just kind of go around and, uh. We won't be making a decision tonight, but maybe give John some direction, uh, on what we'd like to contemplate. Let's start with you, Councilmember Dowpass.
Sure, I have a question for John, uh. Deferrals, I have a very real life example that I've just been through, so I know what a deferral is. Um, but a special exception, can you give me a, a good example of something that's happened in the last? Couple of years that would help me digest a special exception scenario?
Uh, sure. So, uh, Rice Creek subdivision was recently approved. Um, and in the, in the ground that was actually subdivided. Uh, there was plenty of space to do curb gutter sidewalk in the normal, uh, normal manner. But in Rice Creek, uh, there wasn't enough room between two of the existing property owners. Uh, which are right as it came out here onto eight fifty east. And so you'll notice the sidewalk. In this area is actually, uh, where the park strip normally is in a subdivision. And that was a special exception that was approved by the council, that essentially it narrowed the overall right of way width. But it didn't narrow the asphalt width. So I, I mentioned, uh, that there's a few things that, that special exceptions can't be used for, and one of them is you can't narrow the asphalt. Um, but the council did allow for a narrowing of the right of way and a, and a.
John, I'm assuming having the mailboxes in the middle of the sidewalk on the north side of twenty-six hundred was an exception to a special exception? Uh, that is, that surely, that surely is not in compliance with ADA.
So that, that was done prior to the special exception ordinance, um, being approved?
But that is the kind of special exception that would have to be made today, I assume.
Uh, yeah, that basically moving the, or it typically is dealing with narrowing the, the right of way width. Um, the engineer has the authority to move the sidewalk around in the right of way as appropriate. Um, but you're right, Mayor, that the north end of our right of way is right on the north side of that sidewalk.
Does that answer your question, uh, Councilmember Dowpass?
Yes, and then I just had, um, another thought that I think is escaping me right now. Let's see if I can. Gather it back in. Oh, okay, so on the deferral, is there somewhere recorded if, if somebody were provided a deferral? And then they sold their property, the new owner, um. Do they automatically receive that deferral, or do they need to come back to us? Or, and, and is it tied, and is it somewhere on a title somewhere that they would technically be notified that there's a deferral on that?
So it, they would, it would, it, they would not have to come back and ask for it to be extended. They would automatically get the deferral. Um, technically, they should be made aware of it. Um, I can tell you nine out of ten times, uh, the title company will indicate that it's there, but not. Uh, explain the ramifications of it. Uh, we've seen that happen several times in the city where there's a, a color on the title that basically has this, this financial obligation. Um, and residents find out about it after they purchase the property. And it, it's been problematic for those second or third landowners.
Okay, thank you. And then just real quick, I just wanted to mention kind of my thoughts on some of the things here. Uh, on the deferral, my, my mindset is that I, so it, to give a good example. I would never provide a deferral if there is already a sidewalk that is adjoining the property that is required to put in a sidewalk. But I would generally be open to the idea. If, if it's kind of an island in its own and there's no set designated timeline that an, a sidewalk will tie into it. So those are my only thoughts there. I know there's gonna be a lot of good discussion here though, and I'm, I really want to hear what everyone has to say.
Thank you, Councilmember. Uh, Councilmember Swanson, you've been around probably when this was discussed earlier in the council.
Yes, at length. Um. The problematic nature. For me. Comes down to that o- over the last eight years. Deferrals. Almost exclusively, I can't think of one off the top of my head right now. That really wasn't related to personal inconvenience. And not something that is. Um, you know, it comes down to dollars and cents. I'm gonna have to spend some money really that I don't want to spend. And here's a reason that I can come up with not to spend that money. Our city with just the, the subject of sidewalks, our city is covered in areas now. That are wall-to-wall houses, houses all the way up and down the street where there aren't. There isn't a continuous sidewalk because individual homes. As they were built onesie, twosie here and there were granted deferrals. And then the deferrals are either never acted upon or, uh, fought, i- it just. It, it leads, the reality is at some point there's going to be a sidewalk there and, and we really don't have a mechanism. To with any certainty say that it won't happen in the next five years, or it will happen in the next five years. What we do know. Is that the land around it, unless something very strange happens, is going to be developed and there will be a sidewalk. I think of the. Development that was, uh, the John Hanson development up on, uh, Loman View, uh, near Mr. Scadden's home. Near our, the, on the north side of our public works, uh, we made curb and gutter, gutter be put in there. Because eventually there will be a road on both the sides. That have heard curb and gutter, and we could have deferred that. Uh, if we had so chosen, but again. And again, that probably by definition is the difference in my mind between deferrals and special exceptions. Special exceptions ask us to look at circumstances. Uh, be it, uh, health, safety, general welfare, best interest of the city. Impact on neighboring properties, unique character of the property. So. Yeah, uh, for me, under that unique character of the property such as physical surrounding shape, topographical conditions. Uh, use of natural features, uh, preservation of historical, cultural, community features. There are a number of circumstances under which a special exception to not put in a sidewalk could be had. I never have felt and still don't feel that, well, there isn't a sidewalk to my left or my right, so why should I have to pay to put it in? Is a legitimate reason to not put the sidewalk in. Um, simply because that's why we have so many unsidewalked areas in the city. So. My preference would be that we do away with deferrals completely. I think we have enough under the special exceptions, we could even discuss. If it was felt that there are other considerations that could be added to the special exceptions list. Under which we would consider not, uh, uh, expecting something to be put in right away. Um, but ultimately it's just a can that gets kicked down the road and as John mentioned, typically falls on. Um, the finances of those who really never should have had to put it in in the first place. A homeless built sidewalk goes in.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanson, and, uh, I think as we look at the. Priorities of citizens, they want to make sure we have adequate sidewalks for the safety of the kids going to school. And, uh, that's one of their priorities. Let's go to, uh, Councilmember Barker. Councilmember?
Yeah, uh. Uh, I spoke with Scott Hess today and we. If anyone was on the LPC meeting, there is a phrase I heard, I heard a lot, one size misfits all. I don't think there's anything we can do that'll be the perfect solution. Um, like I've said, I'm again, I'm not a fan of deferral agreements. I don't think they benefit anyone except for the short term. However. By just outlawing them and say they're prohibited is not always the right answer either. Um. For any new development, of course, we should be putting in all the improvements, but when we're talking about. We got a lot of parcels in our city that have a home built on. Large land, large acreage, eight, one to two acres, and they wanted to just subdivide to build a second home. Chances are they're not gonna have sidewalk on either side of them because they're an older home that doesn't have sidewalk. So we keep going back to the Randall property. If you pull up the map and look or even drive down there and go for a mountain road down to Ward Farms. There's no sidewalk on Fruitland there. Who's gonna develop to put in sidewalk? The city's gonna have to come back and put it in. Um. By saying we're deferring it or not allowing or requiring the citizens to put it in, well, when they build their second home, now the city's collecting more property tax off that home. So they are contributing to the sidewalk when we do put it in and they're in front of their home. I, the more I've thought about it, I just. I don't like special exceptions because it becomes what we're talking about today. In front of my house, I have some old Fitz or bushes that my great, great grandparents built or put in when they built their home. If I don't want sidewalk, I come to the city council and say, please give me a special exception because I have these Fitz or bushes that have been here for a hundred years. Is the city council gonna give me that special exception or not? I mean, it's, again, it's an opinion thing or what, what? What the mood of the council is then. So I'm not a fan of special exceptions. I'm not a fan of deferrals, but I think they have their place.
And thank you, Councilmember Barker. Uh, Councilmember Exstrom, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Oh, I have lots of opinions about this. Mostly it's that I think it's time North Ogden had sidewalks on every public street. Just period. And I think we, we start strategically and we just say, this is where sidewalks are going in. You don't have it, you've got to put it in. Um, you know, and we can have the city front the money for it, but then, you know, the, the resident is charged. I want to see especially starting with safe routes to schools. There shouldn't be se- sections of the, the road. I'm looking along thirty one hundred. There's just, you know, somebody that has some, you know, undeveloped property. And so it's like sidewalk, sidewalk, no sidewalk, sidewalk, sidewalk. And so it, you know, sidewalk needs to go there. Um, and that's, that's just kind of where I'm coming from. It's like, you know, we, we have decided that we want to have. You know, public safety is really important. Well, I think public safety starts with, you know, pedestrian safety. So. Um, that's, that's where I want to kind of push. Um, we've talked about like special improvement districts that we can, we can do. And, you know, if there's this financial hardship, there might be. Grant money that we can get to get it done, but I, I really would just like to see sidewalk everywhere in North Ogden. That's me.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Ekstrom. You know, I think in a conversation I had with Councilmember Barker, he basically, I think, has a good point. Uh, as long as there's a provision for deferrals, who do we pick and choose? We end up having to give it to everybody. Uh, you've heard me use the term. Uh. Uh, selective enforcement. Is it who, who somebody knows and who they can get to to get the deferral? I mean, it just becomes very awkward and I think as Councilmember Dowpas indicated. You know, we end up just cooking, kicking this down the, the road. It's prime example, I think, was, uh. Uh, the, the story property, right? That, that was, that was deferred some time ago and the folks that bought it didn't even know. And I think John's right, uh, people are so anxious. Sometimes they don't know the easements they're taking on in their property or et cetera. Um. Not that we're voting tonight, but i- if, if we did vote and it was a tie, I would say that. We just get ourselves in, in problems with selective enforcement and who we're gonna defer and who we're not. Uh, going to defer, so. Um, what guidance would you like to give, John? Would you like him to kind of do a little bit more research and give us the ramifications? The pros and cons of not having deferrals? Uh, I think by law we have to have the, uh, the variances, but. Would you like John to just drop it? What would you like him to do, Council? Let's go with you, Councilmember Dowpas. Just quickly, what's your, uh, what would you like John to do?
Well, I just was thinking, uh. If I'm looking at specific situations where we would consider this, first of all, I want to make it clear. I, I don't feel like it is who you know to get a deferral. I'm, I'm a little bit worried that we're talking about it that way because. I would never put myself in a position to put my integrity on the line that. There's someone that I know and I've known them my whole life, and so it, it has this influence on my decision. If I felt like I was going to have some influence on a decision because it's somebody that I know. Then I would take myself out of the matter. So I'm a little bit worried that we talk about it too much that way. Um, so that's just my thought there. And ultimately, if we wanted to vote on if we do away from deferrals or not. Um, I would be open to, to just voting on it and we see how the vote goes and we move forward from it.
John, what can we do tonight?
Well, so anything would require an ordinance change. Um, I think it's just set on the agenda as a discussion item. Um, and so we would not be able to, I mean, we do have a provision that says we can take action on any item. But we wouldn't have an ordinance change tonight because we don't have any language yet.
Yeah, that was my question of what direction do we give you? And Councilmember Dowpas, I. I'm not questioning integrity, but I can tell you there are people out there that feel, uh, based upon who they know. That they can approach them and get things done. Unfortunately, that's kind of how politics are viewed. I would, I'm trying to avoid the council even being put in that position. Because it will happen. Uh, as good a vicinity as we are, there's how politics work. Unfortunately. John, why don't you, uh, uh. Do a little bit of more research on here. Tell us what the pros and cons are and prepare what an ordinance would look like. If we eliminated deferrals. Uh, or if we deleted the deferrals and special exceptions. Councilmember Barker, do you have?
Yeah, um, if we're gonna, I'm okay coming up with an ordinance to eliminate deferrals. But I would like to see options where if we were gonna eliminate them, it's not just. You have to put in sidewalk, curb gutter, all that. Whether we do, I can't remember the term, John will correct me, pay the money, what it would cost and they can, the city can take that money and put in sidewalk elsewhere. Other options. I don't like just, this is what you have to do. Let's give people, give people some options if we're gonna eliminate deferrals.
I think that'd be part of the pros and cons, so good point. Any objections to that, other council members? All right, John, uh, I think you've got some of your, Councilmember Swanson, did you want to add something?
Sorry, I couldn't get unmuted quickly enough. I think whatever we end up with. We need to have, we're, we're no longer a, a small country town tucked away in a corner. Um, we're, we're a larger and we're going to be larger, um, quite a bit in a relatively short period of time. Uh, compared to how long the city has been around. We need to be moving to where we, we base our decisions on. Factual information on that we can point to. We granted this exception because of, you know, whatever the. Excuse me, the, the types of special guidelines that we put in, topography, um, you know. Something of a historic nature, something along those lines. My concern all along with the deferrals that we've done is that there really isn't anything other than. Somebody doesn't want to do it and they've asked for it and we've given it. There really isn't anything concrete. Um, objective, qualit- uh, quantitative. That we can pin our decision on, uh, which to me makes it feel very arbitrary, very capricious, very. Um, you know, it just, we, we have to get away from that as we continue to grow and become a, a more complex city. We, we have to have. Um, yeah, uh, sorry, brain fog causing me to ramble on. I'm done.
I, I fully understand, fully understand. Okay, uh, John, I think you've got some direction. Uh, we'd like a little bit more information, the pros, the cons, the options. Um. And, uh, let's, let's go that direction. Like I say, my, my concern is the council gets put in awkward positions. Um, you know, my short term of the mayor, I've actually seen people think that, uh. That that can get done because of the, of who they know and I'm proud that, uh, our council members have stood up and said, you know. Here's under the conditions, we'll do it, Hal will do it. So, John, does that help you?
Uh, yes, it does. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Ekstrom.
I have actually requested some time with Dave and John and, uh, Scott to just look at. The, the, the way we're approaching sidewalks. I mean, and, and, and I'm a- assuming this is kind of where this is headed. This is where we're getting the deferrals and the special exceptions. I'm not thinking of any other type of. Uh, requests that we get for something other than that. I think we're fine, kind of focusing on the curb and gutter and sidewalk issue. So I'm, I want to sit down with those three gentlemen and see what we can do as far as making the actual legislation wording. Um, have the necessary, uh. Flexibility in it that it, it needs so that it's actually written into the code. So that we're not coming up with, again, the arbitrary and capricious at the time, well, let's interpret it this way or that way. Cause I really would like to, you know, if we're gonna have an exception, it is for these very things, kind of more like the variance, right? It's like special exceptions and deferrals are for these very, very specific things. And so, um, anyway, that it's a little, uh, more concrete and we have something. Really to refer to, to keep it from even the appearance of, of preferential treatment.
I think your point is well taken. As we made the deferral, uh, a couple of weeks ago. You know, I think I made the comment, we should know the basis on which we made this deferral. Because we owe it to anybody else that has those same circumstances to make that deferral. Otherwise we get into an awkward situation. So. Anyway, uh, appreciate your comments, John. We'll proceed along there. So. Let's go to item number twelve, which is also going to be led by John Call, our city manager. Uh, he's pre- prepared a few slides on the continued discussion on city vision and goals. John?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So Susan actually pulled item number six from the agenda just because she wanted me to be the only one who talked tonight.
You're welcome.
Um, but so this is just a follow-up, Council. Um. So we can keep the discussion moving, uh, these items are listed in the order of, of the way the council's preference. Um, indicated. Um, you know, basically one through fourteen. And as you know, the, the, the residents also, uh, provided some feedback on the, that list. And so the, the first question probably is, does this list include everything that the council wants to? Were there things in that other item or that other list that you want to include? Um. Because it'll, you know, obviously we're not finalizing anything tonight, but we're just continuing the discussion. So that, that might be a good first question while we're on this slide is. What are we missing? What do we need to include?
Feedback, Council?
Uh, there might be something missing here unless if I'm missing it, um. Uh, there might be something missing here unless if I'm missing it, um, tell me, John, but. We have an obligation to do the. Uh, the pond at Patriot Point. And is that listed somewhere on an item to be funded anywhere? I'm, I'm probably jumping ahead of our, our conversation, sorry.
It, it kind of tie, it ties in with number six, the commercial development on twenty-six hundred north. Um, but I have updated the slides as we get do it down to them that shows some of the CDA money, which includes money for moving the. That, uh, stormwater pond.
Thanks.
Okay, well, counsel, if you have anything you'd like to add to this, you know, after reviewing the residence. Um. Uh, survey, uh, you know, this is, this is a very, very fluid discussion. You know, these priorities, I anticipate we will continue to bring back year after year. Uh, some of them will be finished and will come off the list and some things will be added. So it's a, it's a very fluid discussion. Um. Uh, well, maybe not fluid, more like, uh. Would you say clay, something that gets molded and will stay, but we have the ability to change it? But I did go through and I took each of these items. And I said, okay, what things have we already made the decision to fund? What, where, where have we already dedicated money? Uh, first one is the public safety building. The council took out just over six point seven million dollars in bond. Uh, with four million dollars from fund balances. To start the process and complete the process, although we haven't completed it, obviously. Um, the other one, which was item number three on the list, again, these are the council priority, you know, prioritized. So number three on council list has already been funded. Um, the, between water fund and ARPA. We've got enough money to complete that project. Um, we do have this, most of these are estimate numbers. Um, not the first one, public safety, we're going to build for what we said we built it for. Sorry to jump in there before you told me that, Mayor, but. Um, the, the rest of them are, are estimates because we don't have bids yet. So like the water tank, we're, we should be around three million dollars. But there's a lot of things that could go up or down based on what the ground really looks like as we dig and. What, things like that. Um. This next one, number six, is the one you just talked about, uh, Councilman Dowpas. Uh, we technically have three point six million dollars of CDA money. That's available for commercial development on Washington and twenty-six hundred. The majority of that money is focused around that intersection. Um, where, uh, to put it into perspective, about one point eight million of that. Can be used to relocate the existing detention basin. Um. So there, there is money available, but there's things for like sidewalk improvements on twenty-five fifty. There's some money in the CDA for undergrounding power lines. I mean, there's. There's quite a list of items that we could go into at a later date if the council would like. Um. And then the, the next two items are things that the council has greenlit for this year, but we're waiting to hear back from Ramp. Um, the first one is lights and sound at the amphitheater, uh, the idea being that the city would fund about a third of that request. Um, and then, uh, there would be some fundraising for the other third and then Ramp would, would fund a portion of that. As well. And then the trailhead, I believe it was a fifty fifty with the city's. Uh, obligation being about a hundred nineteen thousand dollars. So those are, those are five items. Where there is some sort of identified source of revenue. Although, as was mentioned with the last two, we don't have the money for those yet. Um, although we do have the money in our coffers to meet our obligation to ramp, if ramp approved those, um, projects. The, oh, we have a comment on that slide before I move on?
Comment, counsel? Doesn't look like it, John. Go ahead and move on.
Okay, uh, the next is kind of. Things yet to be funded. Um, some of those I know, number two. Maintaining a growing police force, the, the council is actively funding that and has done some very great things. For funding that goal. Um, but as we maintain and move forward and as we grow as a city. We, it es- we estimate that really it's about a hundred fifty thousand dollars to add a new officer. Because of vehicle equipment. Annual salary and all of the costs associated with that, with training and things. Um, obviously to keep an officer, it's not quite a hundred and fifty because you're able to spread that vehicle. Cost out across, you know, the five or six years that we keep those vehicles around. Um, but so that's just, again, these are estimated numbers. Um, additional water infrastructure, it's four million plus. Um. Because we, some of the projects that we will likely do in the next ten years, we haven't identified yet. Because we don't know where most of the houses will be coming in. Although I will say that with Jason and Dave and our engineers. That we have a good idea of what different areas that the city will need. We're just not sure which ones of those will happen first because we don't know where all the growth is going to come.
John, we still have, uh. What I call a, a reimbursement agreement. Uh, probably about what, one point six million dollars that, uh, we won't get, um. Water impact fees on, up on the hill.
Uh, that's correct. Uh, on the, the, on a good portion of the hill. Uh, we still do owe or not, we don't owe, but we have an obligation that as we collect impact fees that we will, uh. Put those back to the individual who put the infrastructure in for the water system. Um, the next one is the RDA money and economic growth. Uh, we do have a, an estimate from WFRC that. If we put in ten thousand dollars, uh, they would probably give us a grant. Uh, they're probably, it's better than probably, but. Uh, we haven't been awarded anything yet, but we would get some money, uh, to, uh, do some. Studies down on the south end of the city. Um. Item number seven was emergency preparation. Uh, that one, I think we definitely need to dig into more. To really understand what the council means by that. Um, is that? Is that just understanding a plan and knowing what's going to happen in an emergency? Is that having some sort of a, a stockpile of goods or, you know, kind of what, what extent? Uh, does the, does the city see? Um, number ten, phasing of Barker Park. Um, this is a very high estimate number, meaning. It's a, it's an extra ballpark. Um. It's based on basically five hundred thousand dollars an acre to improve the park. Uh, to put that into perspective. If it costs you six dollars a square foot to put grass, it would be about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars an acre. Um, in the plan that was approved by the, um, the council several years ago, after the feedback from the Barker Park Committee. Um. I believe that the improvements would increase that cost. Um, so instead of seven and a half million just for lawn, it would be upwards of fifteen. Uh, by the time you include it all of the, um. The trails and the gardens and the parking lots and the. Um, the bridges across the hollow and. Things like that, that were meant to kind of create the type of place that the, the committee, the Barker Park Committee wanted to. Um, and then the last item again is an estimate. Uh, fifty thousand dollars to, um. To basically hire a consultant. Or to. Uh, focus some efforts on, on planning for park growth, planning where it's going to be and what type of parks. Um. To provide a little support for a visioning for that, uh, that. Uh, vis- or that. Item. Uh, the last four items are things that we don't have a specific. Funding yet. And in a lot of ways may not require funding. Uh, for example, number four, developing a long-term financial plan. Um, with the work that the council and the mayor and Jamie. Have been doing, we, we're well into the process of developing a system. That will ensure the long-term financial, um, success of the city. Doesn't mean we won't hit bumps as we go through it, but it means that we are on our way to understanding our finances. In a way that I don't think the council has looked at any, at before. And I think we have the tools to, to really kind of, uh, establish a system and create. Um, basically eliminate some of the year-to-year decisions. In favor of these long-term decisions, which again, that's what we're talking about is long-term goals. Um, number eight, the preservation of natural waterways. Um, that one might require some funding from the city. It also is going to require some ordinance work and things like that. So it's hard to put a number on that. Um, that also ties into the preservation of open space. Uh, probably more with ordinance, uh, and code work and maybe development agreements. Than really the expectation of the city going out and actually purchasing open space. Um, you know, we're not Park City where we can spend forty-five million dollars to buy a hillside because we don't have a bunch of absentee. Uh, residents who, uh, don't vote in our elections. Um. And then the last one that was on the list, not that it's not a priority, because remember. These are the top fourteen priorities for the city out of hundreds of different priorities that we, uh, deal with and, and try and prioritize every day. Uh, would be focusing on the arts guild and meaningful activities in the city. So, um. That's, that's kind of the financial component. And then I went through and I put each of these, each of those items in different categories. Um, I'm not offended if you disagree with where I've categorized everything. Um, but I've tried to include them in where I think. Um, if the city wasn't divided into departments, how we would categorize things because there's a lot of different things going on. And some of our departments, um, really kind of branch across some of these. I mean. You could argue, uh, very successfully that Public Works has a, has a huge role in emergency preparation. Even though I put it in a public safety category. And that's because public safety is not just police, it's all things related to the safety of the public. So. Um. Anyways, these are, these are more just for council to kind of understand how, how I grouped them. Some things are in here more than twice or more than once. Like the RDA money and economic development. Also shows up under economic development because commercial development. Is linked to economic development, just like RDA money is tied to finance. So. Some of these things are carry across multiple categories. Um, and I just tried to make sure that, uh, we were talking about. Um, all of them and maybe categorizing and seeing where two of our goals might align and we might be able to tackle them at the same time. Or at least, um, use some other resources. Um, here's the top six items. That I saw from the resident suggestion list. Um, there was a, a lot of them who mentioned safe routes to school and sidewalks. Uh, several comments about recycling coming back. Um, a, a few or several about the recreation program expansion, uh, fiber was brought up. Uh, water conservation and then growth. Um, so I, I just tried to kind of summarize. Everything as best I could. There are, I'm, I am confident there were. Great suggestions on that list that I didn't include on this. And that's because I tried to focus on the ones that showed up several times, although I wouldn't surprise, I didn't count them or anything. I just kind of went through and. I'm sure I missed them or missed at least one or two that should be included. So, um, that's why it's really up to the council if there's anything that's added and not up to me. So. Um, what, what thoughts are, where can we go from here, counsel?
Mayor? Yeah, Councilmember Swanson, go ahead.
All right, I didn't realize that I hadn't turned my camera back on. I had a bit of a coughing spasm there. Uh, there are. A, a couple of, a- as I looked through this in the packet. One that really caught my eye that we have talked about on a number of occasions. Not just, uh. Under Mayor Berube, but under previous mayors, but we really never have tackled. And, uh, that is a long-term financial plan. Um, we have, we do pretty good at, uh. You know, managing our budget next year and, and looking a year or two out. But I, I can't really say that we have. A strong. A strongly defined. Long-term financial strategy. And some of that strategy I would think would include. Statements about. What we feel the proper fiscal role of the city is. Uh, to what degree do we provide? Recreation, uh, we obviously have our recreation programs. That are wonderful. How far does that get expanded? Does that expand all the way to? Uh, eventually a rec center. As you read some of the commentary that's made on different Facebook posts and different avenues of communication. There are quite a few people who would love to see a rec center built. Is that something? That from a long-term financial strategy, we feel is. Uh, proper for the city. I think we need to have those discussions and develop this long-term plan. And we have a, a genius at the helm of this kind of thing in Mayor Berube and we really need to take advantage. Of, uh, the time that we have with him. And, uh, with Jamie and with John. To develop this long-term strategy that guides us further than just the next year or two. Um. And, and then I think for the things that need to be funded. I think we need to just have a. A discussion and we. We just need to mark down, okay, this is the order that we're going to do them in. And, uh, and try to work out a, a consensus on priority.
Councilmember Swanson, um, those are good points. Um, just a couple of things, I think we have prioritized at least a partial list. Of our long-term obligations, number one being our commitment to public safety. And two, to keeping infrastructure ahead of growth. Um, then we, we start getting down, but when you kind of look at those two things. Um, it does limit our resources with our flow right now, and I think. One of the things that we're trying to do, uh, that we need to shortly refine. Is. You know, how we've used, we, we've now budgeted excess to go into capital. Projects funds and identified how those would be. Developed over time, the. Key to that is going to be kind of controlling the appetite. Of what those funds are used for. Um, so I think there is a long ways to, to go, but I think we do have. At least two priorities. That are very. I think we're up to now, what, we're not quite up to sixty percent of covering, uh, public safety with property tax yet, right, John? Still in the mid to high fifties, as I recall?
I, yes, I believe that's correct, Mayor.
Um, so good, good points, and I do think that, uh. You know, we do need to look long-term. That's kind of what got us in a little bit of bind with. Public safety, right? And I guess each council kind of. Sets their own priorities, um. I think we've made it clear that this council's pri- number one priority is public safety. Which entails, you know, many things like safe routes to schools. You know, retention, those things. So a lot of work to do. A lot of opportunities and I think we, we're, we'll continue to work on those, so.
I, I think the more that we can write it down. And, and, uh, detail that strategy in writing. The less easy it is for future councils to just simply go a different direction. Without detailed discussion about, well, what about that? That ten-year and that fifteen-year financial plan that was put together. In twenty twenty-three. Where are we in relation to that as we, as a new council decides to go off in a different direction? Um, anything that we can do. To, to, uh, monument that I'm having a loss for words tonight.
Yeah, no, I think your, uh, your point is well taken and I think. We've got the initial steps of that, uh. But I, I think another thing is we ought to have some goals on what our. Funding of the city is based upon what I would call. Controllable revenues. Versus uncontrollable revenues, if you know what I mean, um. You know, how do we define this balance between? Sales tax, property tax and keeping North Ogden. You know, uh, ahead of the growth curve. So a lot, a lot of work to be done and I think this council's up to it. So good points. Any other comments, uh, counsel? All right, uh, John, I think there's some things here that I know you're working on. We talked. Little bit about water conservation and what our landscape ordinance may look at like. Um, we've had some discussion about fiber. Uh, we do have had some comments about recycling. I think, uh, that'll be part of the. Budget discussion. Uh, this year. And uh, council member Ekstrom. Mention she'll be getting together with Dave and. And others in regards to what our sidewalk, our lan- our streetscape. Ordinances really look like and should be. So I think these are on the uh. On the table for discussion, we just need to get better definition and uh. It's probably gonna entail some work sessions. Along the way to get this done, so. Anything else, council, that you uh read from citizens that uh? It's not on this list that. Was repetitive from citizens? Okay, John, what further do you need?
Um, I, I mean, if, if the council's okay, I think that uh. If it doesn't sound like we're gonna really reorganize a lot of our priorities, so I think we'll just start getting the department heads. Um, working on defining these and, and that's what we'll bring back to you next, just kind of a. Uh, maybe a paragraph of exactly what the goal is for each of these, and we'll go from there, if that's okay.
Yeah, it might be less confusing to the department heads, John, if. The council were to get a little bit further definition. I've always found it frustrating. To have uh department heads. Uh, put all this work in and then have the council or the board of directors, whoever it is, say, oh, that's not what we were thinking. So I, I'm just wondering about. Maybe the council working on a little bit more definition.
Okay, so we could um. Uh, if you want, Mayor, we could maybe assign uh things by category. Uh, you know, some of it might make sense, like for those who are the liaisons for the department, maybe for finance, you know, for that. Councilmember to be involved in like parks and. Um, but I think maybe that would be helpful is to. Uh, maybe between you and me, Mayor, we could. Categorize these and ma- and maybe make some assignments on, hey, let's define this.
Yep, I think that's a good idea. They're pretty well segmented now. Like you say, we do have a little bit of. Overlap, but I, I think. These are almost uh segregated adequately that we could. Have a pretty good discussion with council members about. The approach to take here. When you look at public safety, we've got council member Severing. Uh, utilities. Uh, we've got council member Ekstrom. Uh, working on that. We've got council member Swanson on finance. And I think we'll see, the council will see, we had a good meeting the other day with council member Swanson and Jamie and John and myself. About how we've implemented the initial steps we talked about in our financial plan and. Give you some idea about how maybe that capital projects fund could build. Then we need to identify priorities for you. So. Economic development, we have, you know. Uh, council member Dowpass. So let, let's do that. We'll get back to you, council, okay? Does that, does that sound all right? Or we can surely take the other approach. I've just found it. It gets a little bit discouraging for. Department heads to put in all that work and then say, oh, those really weren't the uh. Bumper guards we had or the. You know, I'm frustrated, I might. Hate to do that, but we can surely take the other approach if you'd like. I'm not seeing any objections, John, so let's uh. Move down that line there, okay?
Okay.
Thank you for your good work on this. Very nice colors and design, by the way. So, all right, let's move on to council reports. If we could. Let's start with council member Barker. Uh, maybe he could inform us what's going on in parks and recreation and. And what we can do to help there. Councilmember Barker.
So I was able to go with the Parks Department. Uh, we went out, checked out a. Indoor pickleball court called The Shed. It's out in Taylor area. Um. Tiffany's looking at possibly bringing a proposal of, it may be a good idea for our city, something similar. But we'd had a team building activity, we're able to spend time out there. Um, the big thing that Tiffany wanted to relay is that we are getting ready to hire. We need aquatic center staff, seasonal staff to work in the parks. And rec department, so if you know any. High school age kids that want a good seasonal summer job. We're hiring.
And it's gonna be at an interesting rate. We're gonna have to hire, isn't it, Councilmember Barker?
Yep. Uh, I heard they'll even hire the mayor to run a lot more if he wants a part-time job.
He can't handle it. He's too out of shape. Anything else?
Oh, that was it.
Okay, thank you for that report. All right. Let's move on to councilmember Dowpass. Talk to us about building and planning and economic development.
Sure, thank you. Yeah, appreciate it. So I uh was interested to find out where we were, where we were at on building permits this year. So I asked uh Scott Hess to look into this, and he had Colleen uh within the city look into these numbers for me, so. In twenty twenty-one. Uh, through the end of February, we had seventy-eight building permits that were approved. Kind of year-to-date from the beginning of that year to where we're at at this point of this year for last year. And in twenty twenty-two, this year, we have fifty building permits that have been approved. Now, these could be single-family homes, remodels, or solar installation, but. Either way, it gives you an idea that. Uh, we probably have uh about a week left, and so maybe the numbers will normalize a little bit more, but we're a little bit below where we were at. Last year. Which actually kind of makes a lot of sense with the, what Mayor, you and I and. Uh, Phil learned at the economic forecast meeting that we had at Weaver County a few weeks ago where. There's just a, a true problem with builders being able to build uh. Their buildings fast enough. So, you know, whereas uh. A. Single-family home would take four months back in the day. Now with sup- supply uh issues and constraints, it's about twelve months or longer to get a, a structure in, so that might be part of what's happening there. Um, and then I just wanted to mention that. The legislative session is alive and well right now. It's going quickly. And basically, any bill that doesn't pass out of committee by the end of this week. Um, it's, it's going to die, so. We're going to have some information probably by the beginning of next week as to where some of these housing bills are. And if I remember correctly, part of the reason that we were pushing off our. General Plan land use discussion and, you know, final approval on that map. Is we just wanted to make sure there wasn't any state legislation that got in the way. And so um I'm confident that we can move. Quickly on that general plan update as soon as we have final information from any legislation that may come.
Thank you, Councilmember Dowpass, for that report. I know that there's a lot of discussion. In fact, I forwarded to John. And uh Scott and, and John, maybe you could uh pour that out to other council members about. The middle housing market and uh. How that's being viewed and discussion going on in the legislature about. Development versus city zoning. So they can get a feel for that, if you'd maybe forward that out to them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll grab that link and send it out there.
Thank you. Okay, uh, councilmember Swanson, let's go to you.
I'm gonna beg for forgiveness tonight. I. Can give you a, a list of reasons, but I am unprepared to give a financial report tonight. Hey, look at that. I didn't receive that earlier today.
Uh, I think this uh, uh, maybe if you'd like, John could go through this. This is. Kind of uh regurgitation of what we went through in the Audit Committee meeting the other night, if you'd like, or you can, you can take the lead on it.
John, would you please?
Okay. Um, so I will, I will go quick. Uh, but essentially, this first slide shows. Uh, where revenues are at halfway through the year and where expenditures are. And you can see that in most, or in a lot of cases, uh, revenues are ahead of expenditures. There's a few times when that's not the case. Um, Aquatic Center is, is probably the one that's furthest away. And that is large part due to the fact that a lot of our revenues for the season, which is, you know. Memorial Day or, you know, Memorial Day to Labor Day. We get through our season pass sales, and a lot of that happens at the beginning of the year. As well as our swim lesson signups happen at the beginning of the year. So um anyways, we're. Really, this is about what we normally see. Um, we do see a few areas where we might be a little lower than we normally like to be, like with the water fund. But Jamie has been going through it even since the Audit Committee. And we are actually even with forty-five percent of our revenues. Of our budgeted revenues collected um ahead of how many we collected last year in revenues. So she's been digging into it deeper and deeper and, and uh trying to make sure she can adequately, or. More than adequately explain what's happening and, and what, if there's an area we need to be concerned about. As of this point, there's nothing that she really has a concern over. Um. This just shows the general fund revenues and expenditures and where we're at. Again, halfway through the year, so how much we've gotten in, which is the, the items in blue. How much we spent, which is the items in orange. Uh, the one that always sticks out is non-departmental. Um, the majority of that budget is our annual insurance premium. That we pay once a year and we paid in July. So that is always high, uh, nothing out of the ordinary there. And then the council, I guess we're just buying you too many treats, council, for meetings, so maybe these Zoom meetings will help pull us back in the budget. Um, again, really not, nothing out of the ordinary, nothing super concerning. Um.
Wasn't that the elections, John, that kind of threw us up? That high?
Well, and it, and that's exactly right, that we pay for elections out of there, so. It, it disproportionately pushes our budget high at the beginning of the year when it's an election year, so. Um. Uh, this is showing uh the quarters and the revenue, which quarter we receive it in. Um. Again, showing that. Um, some, some of those funds, your utility funds, we get a pretty good even revenue through the quarters. Uh, some of them are a little more lopsided depending on how our tax dollars come in or revenues, like with the aquatic center. Um, and then um. The budget over expenditures as a percent of budget. Um. Or the expenditures, again, it shows how much we spend. You know, the aquatic center is a good example. It closes in September. Um, or actually in August, and so September, October, November, December, we don't spend a lot. Other than we do quite a lot of repair during the off-season, so. Nothing out of the ordinary on that slide. Uh, sales tax has been uh higher than we anticipated. Uh, so that the green line is what we budgeted. The red line is what we're actually receiving. And then the purple line is what happened last year. So the council did a very conservative budget for this year. In fact, we didn't, we didn't increase our projection over our projection from last year. Uh, but our revenues are still coming in quite high, about eighteen, well, not about, eighteen point three-three percent higher. Uh, than what we budgeted. Um, so we are. Uh, quite a, quite a ways ahead. Um, we're not through everything yet, but this is only five months, so there's still seven months left, left in the year. And you can see just looking at history how that. This graph will wiggle and move as we go throughout the year, but nothing to be concerned about. And then the last thing, just updates. We've got a new accountant. Uh, here named Christie, uh, she's been great uh in helping us catch up on invoicing and things and taking on some new projects. Right in the middle of budget preparation, our work session next week, we'll be talking budget with the council. Um, so prepare yourself for that. Uh. Drink some No Do's. I guess you eat No Do's. I don't know what to do. I don't eat. I've never had No Do's, but. Uh, be ready for that discussion. Um. Fraud risk assessment is something that the, the Audit Committee will review every year. Um, but we also want to make sure that people are aware, this is the employees, council members, residents, anyone who may have a concern. Uh, they can email fraud at nogden.org. And that will distribute your email to a list of individuals. Uh, the people on that are the mayor, the finance director, the uh council liaison for finance, uh, myself. And I believe the uh recorder. So the idea is that it doesn't just go to one person who can ignore it. It goes to five people so that it, it will hit. On the radar of all five people. Um, people can also contact the mayor, the city council. Um, or they can uh go on the website at finance and find additional information about uh what to be concerned about and how to. Report it, so. That is it for the finance.
I would uh just throw out for councilmember Swanson. I know he was prepared because he did an excellent job of leading our Audit Committee meeting. The other night, but. I've gained a fuller understanding of what brain fog means, so. Uh, it does go on for quite a while. Okay, anything you'd like to answer, uh, add to that, Councilmember Swanson?
No, the, the only thing I would add uh from. Jamie. Uh, in an email I received from her earlier today. Is that in aggregate, we're, you know, we're fifty percent of the year. Uh, the sales taxes. Didn't come in today for December. Uh, so that we're still behind there. Um, but we're at fifty-four percent in our revenues, our general fund aggregate revenues, and fifty-three percent in our expenditures. So we're right where we need to be. We're, we're still financially quite strong.
Thank you for that addition. All right, uh, we'll move on to public comments, John. If, you know, you would watch to see if. Any of the residents who have joined us tonight would like to make comment. Just as a reminder, if you would like to, please just raise your hand. John will watch for that, or you can use chat. Type in your comments and John will read those. If you would just identify who you are and where you uh. If you're a resident of North Ogden, limit your comments to no more than five minutes. John?
Uh, yeah, so we have a comment from Susan Clements.
Okay, let's hear from Susan.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselor, Council Members. Uh, my name is Susan Clements and I am a North Ogden resident. Um, in the North Ogden Connection, uh, Ryan Speltz had an interesting article. Uh, about their printing process. I thought it was interesting that there are paper shortages. I knew there were a lot of shortages, but I didn't realize there were paper shortages. He also indicated that printers are stockpiling papers and making the supply even tighter. He indicated that two large commercial printers have closed their doors recently. And there are work, workforce shortages. To add to that, he also indicated that deadlines are up to two times uh greater. And they still seem to struggle to get. Our magazine to our homes on time. Um. I'm not a big fan of magazines. I don't have any coming to my home. Uh, I don't subscribe to any. Um. I go online for most of my information, and I really feel like um. And it's interesting that it, it's a good article and it explains. Why the magazine is getting to our homes later, but I think it's a good argument for. Maybe doing away with a paper magazine and going to an online magazine. Or a better, a much better website that would make uh this magazine unnecessary, or. Perhaps a North Ogden Connection website. That's updated weekly with information from all North Ogden departments. There's been a problem in the past of communication between. The city. Departments, um, information about the swimming pool, information about things going on at the. Amphitheater, um. Activities going on, that people drive by, I, especially. Uh, to Christmas, when people would drive by the Barker Park and, oh, there's something going on. We didn't know about it. Uh. We, we need to communicate better, and I think we would do it better online than we would with a paper magazine. Um. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Uh, so we have Merrill Sunderland.
Let's hear from Merrill. Merrill?
I just unmuted. Am I on?
Uh, we can hear you.
Merrill Sunderland, North Ogden resident. Want to thank Mayor and Council. You, as mo- as I observe your efforts to. Move ahead, the county, the city items. I am very impressed. Keep it up. I, I figure whatever time and effort you're putting to it. I, I figure whatever time and effort you're putting to it. Ten percent more would be even better, okay? No, I mean, thank you for your time. Uh, next, uh. The item I wanted to go into is, uh. Mister John Call went through the North Ogden City Long Term Goals. And I think that was well put together, and I'm just kind of mentally go back through those green. Slides he put together. Uh, priority was set on items, funded projects. Were identified, and then there were items to be funded, seventeen million. And of that fifteen million is phasing of Barker Park. Uh, that just came out very scary. Uh, very, very impressive that Barker Park gets all that attention. Now, uh, I think you did a very good job of describing and explaining why. That could be expensive like that. And the fact that it is going to be phased over. More than, you know, sixteen months to make all that happen and. Uh, that kind of a expense, so as I was still stunned and shocked by that slide. Seventeen million, fifteen million for Barker Park. I listened to you move down to the. Different, different uh groupings of the items and I'm going to focus on parks. In parks, you had identified lights and sound at the amphitheater, which is Barker Park. Uh, phasing of Barker Park, which is a fifteen million. Planning for park growth and improvement of trailheads, now, my comment. Is focusing on parks. I am concerned that the major focus financially that is being identified. Is for Barker Park. Knowing that that's going to be over a period of whatever is determined as the phases of building Barker Park. I'm not saying that Barker Park isn't important, I'm saying the others are important also. Uh, there are three parks in that corner of North Ogden. Uh, but the other parks around need to be looked at. With more emphasis than just the massive amount of money. Uh, slightly identified here just for Barker Park being built, that's my comment. And thank you for all you do, hopefully as those who define what the parks are going to turn into. And what money should be used to develop and improve them. Uh, think more of all the parks, not just Barker Park, thank you very much.
Thank you, Marilyn, your comments are, are well received, just to point out as a reminder. Uh, as we have excess revenues over expenditures for long-term planning. We have broken those down even further. Uh, just a reminder, ten percent is to go for building maintenance. Uh, to maintain the buildings we have long-term. You know, we'll be re-roofing, we'll be doing things like that. Uh, up to twenty percent of excess revenues over expenditures can be used for parks, not just Barker Park. And then the remainder goes in for long-term capital projects identified by the, by the council. Um, I think one thing we forget is. Uh, I said this to John today, we need to, either need to decide we're going to do something with Barker Park or we're not. Uh, that's, that land has been owned now, I think in addition to twenty years. And uh, it's been, you know, kicked down the road a number of times, so. Uh, we are trying to, to look, uh. More macro at all the parks, Merrill, so your points will taken. I would just point out something else that really wasn't on the. Needed commitments from the city that I don't want us to forget. Councilmember Swanson, you'll remember this, uh, some times ago, we had a study of our roads. Done, and at that point in time, we were ten million dollars behind in road maintenance. I'm not sure we've caught up a whole bunch on that, so. Additionally, what we have to do as we look at long-term financing is how are we going to maintain the existing roads we have? Uh, knowing that we're already behind the eight ball, so to speak, so. Uh, it's, it's pretty complicated, but I have a lot of confidence in the council. Uh, that as we uh green light and brainstorm, we'll come up with some solutions, but. I'm, I'm just a believer that we can't continue to. Kick things down the road and hope for the best, we've either got to say, okay, this is what we can do, or this is what we can't do. So, uh, big, big decisions uh ahead for the council members in the next little while. So, welcome, uh, Councilmember Dowpass. Um, all right, uh, John, do we have comments from anyone else?
Uh, no other raised hands at the time.
All right, then we'll move on to item number fifteen on our agenda. Uh, council, let's start with you, have you heard anything from citizens? Uh, that we need to get on the agenda to make sure we don't forget? Any, any, anyone from the council? Okay, looks like those of, uh, let's go to staff. John, do you or Susan or any other staff members who are with us tonight have, uh, comments you'd like to add?
Um, I don't, uh, we, we do have a few department heads listening, so if they could raise their hands if they had a comment, that would uh be helpful.
Okay, we'll give them a chance if they have some comments they'd like to add. Uh, Councilmember Swanson, is that you or?
Yes, I don't have anything to be added to the agenda down the road. Um, but just a reminder that March eighth, Tuesday, March eighth. Is the Weber GOP Caucus Night. And precincts have, some precincts have changed because of the redistrict, redistricting. That was just completed at the state level and finally released yesterday. Because of a petition drive that was underway. So, uh, we need to get a link out so that people can check their precincts. Plan to be at their respective Democratic or Republican caucuses on Tuesday, March eighth. That's where the rubber hits the road. When it comes to uh county and state and federal elections.
Brings up a good. Excuse me, brings up a good point, we have a scheduled council meeting that evening. I believe that's the second Tuesday. We could surely defer that, we have five Tuesdays in the month. If we'd like, I, I think it would be important for. Those council members and staff would like to attend the caucus meeting, have the opportunity to do so, so. Council, what do you want to do with the March eighth scheduled council meeting?
I, I would suggest that we cancel that meeting and move it to another night.
Anyone object to that?
Sounds good.
Uh, we do have the twenty-ninth, which is the fifth Tuesday. If we'd like to re, uh, have our two meetings on the, uh. You know, we could. Either twenty-second, twenty-ninth or something like that, or.
Sorry, Mayor, we, we will have a, a work session on the first.
Okay. So we'll go from there, we'll just cancel the meeting on the eighth and see what develops uh for need of additional meetings after our work session on the first.
Hey, Mayor.
Uh, yes, is that you, Councilmember Dowpass?
Yes, um, I just had a quick question, if anyone has a, an idea where this is going. Um, I, I haven't heard anything about Cherry Days, and I know with. Last year being much more of a citizen-led effort, I don't know if that's going to change things for this year, but. Uh, if Tiffany is on or anyone that is in the know, do we know kind of where we're going with that this year yet?
Uh, I'm glad you brought that up, uh, we had a brief discussion in. Staff meeting the other day. Um, I've heard a lot of discussion about holding the. Uh, parade on a different route than Washington Boulevard. Uh. I think Parks and Recreation is, uh. Determine they'd like to have it on twenty-six hundred, and are doing some homework that we'll discuss with us, I think. In our work session, maybe on the first, they'll be ready. But I've also heard numerous discussions from council members, uh, that they liked it on thirty-one hundred. We do definitely need to get some direction back to uh Tiffany. And uh, from my understanding, Councilmember Dowpass is that, uh. Parks and Rec are going to primarily be responsible, the. Uh, at this point in time, we're unaware of a major movement from citizens to uh volunteer and participate, although we'll continue to pursue that. But you knew, do need to be thinking about the route. Uh. For the parade, and well, we can discuss that, I think, in depth at our work session, John, is that a? An agenda item?
Um, we, I know, we were just waiting to see when the council wanted to, so I will double check with Tiffany in the morning, but that should work. Uh, just getting measurements and talking about parade routes and benefits of starting and stop points, so. Should be a.
Yeah, I think, I think we owe it to the Parks Department to get them an answer so they can. Can proceed along. I know their recommendation, uh, if I'm correct with what we know now is. Is uh twenty-six hundred as the parade route. But, uh, I've heard a lot of discussion about thirty-one hundred, so just come prepared to, uh. To listen and, uh, and give input. Next week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, I have nothing other than to thank you for your service again and appreciate. All you do, we've got some uh important things coming up as discussed this evening in regards to. Long-term priorities and funding sources. Uh, but we also uh have the budget coming up and. A lot of works being put into that, I think Jamie and John and the department heads are very well prepared. But just as a reminder, uh, your job as a council member. Is to make sure that the suggested expenditures by the department heads. Uh, do have identified outcomes and fit into the overall objectives of the city. So we do need you to, to participate, not getting into the grassroots, but just making sure. Then additionally, I've asked Councilmember Swanson, as the mayor pro tem and the longest-serving council member. Uh, we do also need to uh review the comments made on the council procedures. Uh, and what needs to be changed there, John, I, I'm assuming that'll be on the work session too. And, uh. Had a good discussion with Councilmember Dowpass about maybe identifying the processes that will best serve our citizens. Where they can get the fastest response. And where, uh, we can still understand John being the chief operating officer and. And avoiding as much confusion with the department heads as we can, so I've asked. Councilmember Swanson here in the near future to maybe give us some training and some oversight on the. Responsibilities of a council member. Where their responsibilities begin and end. And how we can have a proper flow of information, so we'll be. We'll be doing that too, but we'll give you a little bit more time for the brain fog to, to clear out, Councilmember Swanson.
Very much appreciated.
So. All right, uh. Anything else? Councilmember Barker, did you have something?
Yeah, so I've learned something new tonight. If you sit with your hand up, it'll actually raise your hand on Zoom, I don't know if anyone knew that, but that's why my hand kept getting raised. Um, that was just a gee whiz, and then also, are we meeting in person next week since I thought? I couldn't remember if this was our last Zoom meeting or if you were going to address that.
Well, um, that's truly open for discussion, I know there's, uh. Covid is still going around, we have, uh, we have that amongst the city employees and some in the council, but, uh. Uh, what would you like to do?
I would love to meet in person if possible, I, I think our numbers are overall declining with Covid, but. I'm open to everyone's thoughts.
Yeah, I'm not sure we're really seeing the type of decline, uh. The word is now, if you got the symptoms, don't bother to go get tested, just stay home. So, uh, I think we're seeing a lot of that, but I think hospitalizations are going down, but. Uh, so we have a suggestion to meet in person, uh, anyone object to that? Councilmember Barker?
I, I was gonna say, as knowing somebody that's on a. Healthcare board. I trust their opinion on what we should do tonight. Or next week.
Well, I think if we can spread out adequately, uh, look, it's still out there, it's, it's. It's not going away, but somehow we have to figure out how to live with that, but I think the. Information I'm getting is that we should still, uh, social distance. And where we can't do that, make sure we are masking up. So I think, uh, work sessions, uh, we can have, we could probably accomplish that, so let's give it a shot. And, uh. You know. Uh, see what we can do. Okay? That's the instructions I'm seeing is still be careful, but try to figure a way to continue on with. As much normal activities as you can by being careful, and we'll, uh, we'll spread out and we'll still limit attendance. I think from the public, okay? Does that answer your question? We'll plan on it the next week then. Okay, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
So moved by Councilmember Ekstrom, uh, second?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you for your time tonight, enjoy the rest of your evening.